First prayer, please. To our Father, who art in heaven, Father of the earth, and who art in heaven, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as do we forgive those who trespass against us. In the name of God, it's a temptation, but deliver us from evil. For now is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever unto him. Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Yerda?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
I need a motion to accept the general and the deputy please.
Motion.
And a motion to accept the majority. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Detrow?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Yerda?
Yes.
Okay, public participation, this will be the first time we've done this before.
Yes, yes.
With the summary. Brooke, Ms. Sowers?
Good evening, we are off to the best start I've, we've probably had in a long time. Everybody's happy, kids are happy, building's bright and clean and we're almost probably three fourths, really through the first nine weeks already, which is hard to believe, it's kinda crazy, next week's October and it doesn't seem like it's October already, although I'll be happy when the weather finally breaks and it cools off. We have some really cool things coming in, Mrs. Ross was awarded a grant and it was allowing us to bring in or purchase some looms, so like rug looms. If you come in right now, the, the smaller of, the middle sized one is out in our front entrance and kids can go out there like during lunchtime and weave, and it'll actually make a rug that's probably five feet by two feet. It's something that they can do that just kinda calms them, there's one particular kid on Fridays or Thursdays, if he's coming to take a break, I'll grab him up because he likes doing it and I'll stand there and do it with him. So it's really, really cool, she's got some handheld ones that we haven't quite got all the supplies yet for and then there's a very, very large one that's coming, it's on its way. The Amish actually built it and then it's gonna be in our new library that we just moved and we're gonna be able to use the material that goes in it for kids that need to get some anger out, they're gonna be able to rip the material and then they'll be able to weave it into the thing. So it's just a social, emotional kind of relaxing, take a break, if it's five, five minutes, they can go down there and do that and then they go back to their classroom and they're relaxed and pretty awesome thing. I wanna thank the community for supporting our building, we just finished up our first fundraiser and it was the pepperoni rolls, which I know everybody likes, they're really good. One of the few things, it's pretty cheap to buy and it holds well and everybody gets to eat. So it's good. And then lastly, today and then Monday, our fifth graders are going to the wilds, so half of them went today and the other half goes Monday. It's part of a new initiative that the wilds did, they, last year was the first year and then this year it's their second year, they partner with our science classrooms and they do a lot of ecosystems and life cycle and they take them down, they trudge around in the mud and the wetlands over at the wilds and they come in and the wilds will do some partnerships with the classrooms later on this year, so it's a pretty awesome thing that they get to do. Last year they actually made them a hard copied book of all their observations and scientific findings and it was with a lot of the area school districts, so it was a, a nice book that all the kids got. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Elementary, Ms. Thomas?
I thought she was, I'm sorry.
Nope, it's Jude.
You wanna go? Okay. I'm sorry, I'm not filming that.
You have to break you too.
The presentation.
Nine, seven, four, seven, nine, four, seven, four. We'll just slip.
We're all very.
Knock off the server. And then, Gail, slideshow at the top. Jude, can you show her so she can get the full screen? Play from start, all the way to the top. I can read that, that's tiny.
Yep, you got it. Okay, most of these pictures are of grandparents' day, because I didn't wanna eliminate any of the classes, but there, there's other stuff that we'll put in here too. Okay, first of all, grandparents builds a lot of memories because when kids, kids, it's their most exciting day of the year, I think, in my building. They love to see their grandparents come, they wait, they anticipate, they start telling you three days ahead of time, my grandma, grandpa's coming, and then when they come, they're so excited and when sometimes they think they're coming and someone doesn't come, they're very sad about that. So, you know, you get a little bit of sad stuff too, but I'll tell you another thing, we have very generous grandparents because one grandparent that his granddaughter is in Chris Bell's room this, this year, last year he had a granddaughter in Mrs. Stevens' room. Two years, every year that he's had kids in that school, he hands a teacher sixty bucks and says, here, any kid that doesn't get a book from Book Fair could you make sure one, they get a book. So that's, you know, that's the kind of people that we work with in this community and it's just great. Everybody has a great time, as you can see, we do preschool one day, the crowd isn't quite so big when we're doing just preschool and kindergarten, but as you get into the tougher grades, people get more brave about coming, I think, or whatever you wanna call it, but they do like it. This was first grade students and grandparents and as you can see, the crowd gets a little bit bigger as we go and I'm sorry the pictures aren't a little bit bigger, I thought they would show a little bigger on here. We include literacy activities and I don't know if you can see, but these last two tables on this end are full of literacy activities and grandparents actually sit down and do literacy activities with the kids. And see the little guy in the orange shirt going down the aisle? I want you to look at him because I'm gonna tell you something about him here in a couple more slides and he is walking away after he's already worked with his grandmother. This is when, this is just a preschool group in here, preschool kindergarten is just arriving, but like I said, they're smaller groups. Everybody gets a photo, Mrs. Webb usually does all of our photos, we set up, we call it the photo shoot and then she runs to Walmart, gets them developed and the kids take them home that night. So it's all done and over with and grandparents have their pictures by the end of the day. Now if you think kids down here, everything you say, I want you to look at the little guy in the blue shirt. His, I was watching and they quit working with him on the project and they turned around and were talking to people, so look at his little ear turned up, it's like, I don't know what they were saying, but it was pretty interesting. He looks like, well, I'm just gonna wait, I don't know what they're saying, but he was checking them out. This is the little guy you saw walking away in the orange shirt and I just overheard him say to this for, uh, this to his grandma, I know grandma, I've done this before, if you want to try. It was kind of like he was gonna be teaching her something, that's great, he was looking at it, it's kinda neat. Okay, and you know, look at this little girl up here in the corner, look at her face, she's just so happy that her grandparents are there and it's just amazing to see all these kids smiling all the time. And of course grandparents are happy to assist. Book Fair's always a big hit, which is the next slide. I'm going fast because I could hear everybody has a bunch of stuff to tell you tonight, so. Next, this little guy was pretty funny too. I had a couple pictures of he and his grandma and the first picture, and I don't know why I didn't include it in here, had a bunch of people around her and he's reading this book to her, well, he's in kindergarten and he's not reading, you know, so it's taken a while. And, you know, she says, okay buddy, she goes, I think everybody's leaving, I need to go, but I have to, there's more pages and I have to read them all to you. And then she just kinda looked all like, oh, I don't know what to tell him, it's good. Okay, next is into some of our other stuff. We have a character program this year, it's called Character Counts and we actually do it on, we call it Fan Fair Fridays, one Friday a month. We have nine classrooms and every teacher picks a student out of their classroom that is working the new behavior, the new PACTS behavior goals and they're doing things right, they're kind to others and they're following everything they need to follow. And then on Fan Fair Friday, you take these nine kids and they get to put on skits for other kids about bad behavior and they really cut up when they're allowed to do the bad, you know, samples of bad behavior, it's like, they're just like, oh, okay, and they're just all over the place. And then of course they do the good behavior samples and the kids are really liking it and kids really wanna earn it. Mrs. Webb got a, what's it called, a cricket from Donors Choose and so she makes every kid a shirt and she got all the material and everything and the vinyl paid for due to Donors Choose, so that was a, that was a big deal for the kids because they know they'll get a shirt if they get chosen on Fan Fair or for Fan Fair Friday. Okay, and my last slide is just about a few other things, testing is almost complete. We're still working on KRA. Teachers are working on writing goals, third grade guaranteed paperwork was sent home today. The PACTS Behavior Program, that implementation's going very well. I will tell you one thing really neat about that. I always thought that it was really neat that I could go in the gym and you could have every kid in the gym, you know, y'all running and doing whatever, it's the top of their lungs and I'd clap three times, they would clap three times and everybody sat down and got real quiet. Okay, and I thought that was great, now all I have to do is go like this. And it just, it's silent and it, it amazes me, I don't have to say anything. So it's really something to see how well it works. We are working with Orton Millingham Materials and that's going very well, teachers are loving it and I see kids really involved in it and really liking what's going on with that and that's some new reading training we received at the end of the year last year. Some things we have coming, coming up, in case you have students in building or in case you know someone who does, Life Touch Pictures are September thirtieth and October first, which is coming up, I think, Monday, Tuesday. And Safe Trick or Treat for Visville is October twenty ninth. Then I believe Mr. Detrow started that way back when.
Long time ago.
Yeah, I haven't worn the H suit yet, though.
You haven't worn the gorilla suit and jumped out of the bushes and scared the kids?
No. I was afraid I would.
I did.
Well, that's like that's the way it is.
And that's all I have.
Secret Elementary, I'll call on that later. Middle School, Mr. Bofflin, Mr. Ray's here.
Yeah, Mr. Bofflin's actually at a DC parent meeting right now in our cafeteria, so kinda split the duties today. We also had a great start to the year, through some very unique challenges, this is the first major schedule change as far as structure and timing we've done, probably in fifteen years to middle school. And minus one hiccup, it went pretty well, minus about twenty lost kids, you know, we showed them the right direction and now they're going where they're supposed to go. Included in that is more inclusion type classes. We went from offering four inclusion classes in math and reading to offering twelve and we added three, I'm sorry, four advanced classes, advanced science STEM, advanced language in sixth grade for the first time and two advanced science classes in seventh and eighth grade that have hour-long lab classes. So with all that, there were some growing pains and we got through it in the first couple days and a little more gray hair, which I just not shaved off because I don't want anybody to see it. If you visited us over the summer, you might've wondered how we were gonna start on time because our building was kinda like a construction zone. And it all came together with a lot of help from quite a few people out on campus. If you haven't been out, the gym, gym and the hall got repainted and by that I mean there were some areas that were, the colors were circa nineteen sixty-three and the gym was kinda scratched up where they painted brown, so we got all that looking good. Landscaping outside was the first time it was done, probably in twenty-five years. I know this for a fact, they're getting scratches because of it. New lobby furniture, the office got redo, bathrooms got updated, which is an incredible update. We're not gonna talk about what the old stalls looked like when they left those bathrooms, but I'm glad they're not there for when my kids are gonna start to middle school next year. And then we, we started setting up some flexible rooms, we have, our room one or two got turned into a flex room full of flexible seating, teachers can check out for up to a week at a time. All the furniture moves, they're all in the place, there's whiteboards, there's a TV. And also our library, which is our library learning center now, all new seating, all the shelf, not all the shelves are gone, along the walls are still the shelves and the books because it is still a library, but there's all mobile furniture, bean bags, I built a Lego wall on the one wall and we have a green screen video area. And with that, I do have to thank a few people, first of all Greg Reese, who worked his butt off in that room for us, including coming back right before school started just to do the last couple of things. Our custodians, Linda Rose and Judy, and I just need no offense to you guys as custodians, I think they're the best in business to get that old building looking good. And even the guys at the bus garage, Dave Flash and there was one other person that I actually didn't recognize him. We had some furniture back ordered from the middle of July, the end of July, August, two, they were delivered the day before our teacher workday at two forty-five. And we had kids coming in twenty-four hours after we, they opened the boxes and they came and put enough of them together so the one classroom had enough seats for the kids that were coming. As far as what's been going on in the building or out of the building, eighth grade traveled to vocational schools past Tuesday and took a tour of the Buffalo campus and next Tuesday they're actually going to Zanesville Campus. I don't know if they're excited about it because of the campus or because next week they get to go to lunch on the way home, but either way, they're getting to tour the facilities and see all the things that are going on over there. As I said, our DC meeting for parents is tonight, it is tentatively scheduled from March eleventh through thirteenth to be approved tonight. Great trip, I know traveling with eighth graders seems like it's a horror story in the making, it was outstanding last year I got to go, it was such a great time, the kids are really well behaved while they're there, makes you wonder for the rest of the year, I'm just kidding. And last announcement, which is the best thing that's happened so far this year, our middle school family got a little bit bigger when Mr. and Mrs. Booth welcomed their new son, I don't know, which happened on like the third day of school, so Tiffany hasn't really had to work yet, but he eschews a button, if you come to the home volleyball games, he is always there, so. And that's all from us there, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Member of high school, Mr. Detrow.
We've similarly had a great start to the year, culture's been fantastic and some of the changes we put in last year starting to actually take hold, now we've got a full year under our belt. Starting's did great, we actually have seven new hires in the building that are coming along well. We had CoolDex, both career fair last week, we had thirty-five speakers, businesses and organizations represented. Once again, we'd like to thank Mike Humphrey for his work with that. State report cards were released last week and MHS improved in almost every area, but we still have a very long way to go, but we've spent a lot of time this year already aligning curriculum, getting standards-based exams set up and creating a system for student data that guide instructional decisions moving forward. Homecoming's next weekend, Games Against Union local on Friday night, dance is Saturday from eight to eleven. Amy Zers does a fantastic job setting that up. October twelfth is Festival of Bands, our band's always last on that night, so it'll be roughly nine PM and we're often around the middle of fall sports season, Mr. Wheeler's at the volleyball game tonight, so.
Special education, Ms. Black.
I, I kinda prepared for Secriss, so I, I don't.
Well, do whatever you wanted to do.
Yeah.
You've been wearing multiple hats.
Yes, so I'm gonna, if that's okay, I'd like to share kinda the last, last ditch effort here on Secriss because it has been a, like Shelley said, a wonderful start for Secriss. Staff and students have been wonderful and we've been welcoming thirty-three pre-K, forty-four kindergarten, forty-eight first graders, forty-seven second graders each week to our building and it is a wonderfully beautiful, cleaned building. This includes a wide variety of leveled learners, including ELL student who's receiving a custom, full English immersion academic program in one of our three second grade classrooms with a team of two teachers, one being Ms. Huck and Ms. Reeve, who are both here tonight. Our staff has been building relationships with our students and families during our open houses, phone calls, emails, many texts and meetings before and after school, during club times. So those relationships have been being built. We've welcomed many visitors to our building, the football team and band have done a great job of welcoming and making our environment very welcoming. Our teachers are amazing, they've been doing many, many things to start off the year, they've been completing assessments, valuable data that teachers need to establish that baseline to know what everybody needs. All of the students have access to our Core Five Lexia program and you'll see here on the video, you'll see some of our students holding up their Lexia certificates that we print in color and they take that home with them. To date, as of right now, sixty-nine certificates have been passed out. Hopefully some of you have seen them on refrigerators, but we feel very fortunate to have that ability. There's our ELO student that I'm so proud of and Ms. Reeve and Ms. Huck have done a wonderful job. Over ninety percent of our first grader and second graders have participated in AR, showing tremendous amount of growth in the AR program and I know Gail's building as well as ours have been blessed with a lot of books to where the students can select a variety of books at the reading levels and they take tests and they show their growth to the teachers and their parents with that growth. We monitor that by having a cult that moves down a track, it's a great way to show growth. Kindergarten's gonna begin AR next month because we have advanced kindergartners, of course, everybody knows that, so they're ready to start AR. Other curriculum, as Gail said, we love the OG, thank you very much for, for training all of our staff and thank our staff for taking the time to, to incorporate that OG reading, reflex math, star math, so many good things that we really know our students by this point. Our PACTS Good Behavior Program also, it's up and running and I'd like to give a shout out to our PACTS partner and our teachers who have worked very well with him to incorporate that program so that we are adapting needs. Everybody has so many different needs and we are adjusting to the needs of our students so that every classroom is welcoming and it's positive learning environment for everybody and everyone knows that Secriss is their school every day. I'd like to, at this time, oh, and Jan Ross has taken two, two equine therapy trips and that's thanks to many generous donors in the community that support our equine therapy program and I know Shelley's building as well has been participating, that is a wonderful way for our special needs students to meet their, their goals, to just broaden their horizons and we love that program and we, we continue to support that two times in the spring as well. But I'd like to take a time to thank each and every one of you for allowing me the opportunity to work with the great staff, I've learned so much from them and the students and the families and the community there in Seneca Ville. I, I think I've, you know, been doing this a long time, but I feel like I've become better. I'm excited to start my new role, obviously, I feel like I'm going home for that and, but I have to tell you, I'm very excited to join partnership with our new principal, that will be named later tonight, and join forces to continue the good work that goes on, not just at Secriss, but at every building. I've been loving meeting all the administrators in their buildings to serve the students' needs and I look forward to this new administrator coming in, hitting the ground running so that we can continue to serve our, our true MH unit, which is at Secriss, that is full and also all the inclusion kids, who our teachers welcome every day. And a shout out to our staff who make that happen, because it's hard, it is, it's really hard. My video kinda was a showcase from the start of the year till now. I look forward to many of those events that Gail shared, being shared next month because, boy, there's a lot going on that's gonna be great as they turn over to our new leadership. So with that, I thank you for this opportunity and I look forward to giving that great report on special needs next month.
Thanks Jude.
Okay, Ms. Meredith is at a conference, so she's not here, did anybody sign up to speak? Okay, we'll go to treasurer's report.
Okay, I have approval of minutes from August twenty-sixth, approval of financial report for August. Then for this school year appropriations of twenty-five million eight hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Then the estimated revenues of twenty-five million seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. And group then now certificate for valid purchase orders greater than three thousand. One was Capital One bill, there was just one PO part of that bill that went over. Then RFG associates that, they helped with the Twenty-First Century program, we just didn't have the account set up, you know, by the time they had done the work. Then recommend creating Fund Four Sixty-Seven for Student Wellness and Success as presented. This is an account that needs created because with our new state budget, there's money that's set aside for student wellness, so we will start getting funds next month, so I just wanna get that created before we start getting the money.
And just a little bit with that, which is House Bill One Sixty-Six, I'll be going to a meeting tomorrow and also next week to find out exactly what we're allowed to spend that money for and what we're not allowed to spend it for.
A lot of it's mental health.
Yes. Trauma.
Trauma.
Yes, yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report? It's a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Yerda?
Yes.
Mr. Detrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go down to standing committees, policy, nothing yet, athletic?
I guess, I just wanted to comment, I, I got to go to the football game, I think it was the second game of the season I, I'm in view, and what has transpired with the new, the new road around the softball field, oh, that's, that's awesome, that's really, that's really a nice added touch. We're not gonna be going through the fields and I wanted to thank everybody on that, everybody that had involvement in that, that was such a good, well-done plan, I like it.
Legislative? No, Mid East?
Not much with Mid East, just kinda getting started for the year.
Okay, personnel insurance, no negotiations, building and grounds?
I guess I got a question there, how are we looking with the Visville school? Has everybody got bids on the?
We have, we're, we're waiting for one more to make the three.
Okay.
The one bid that we have will guarantee us seven to nine years, which is good. Once the roof is fixed at Visville, then we'll get the plaster guys in, obviously we'll wanna do the roof first before we get the plaster worked up.
Pictures look so nice, but we didn't look up and that's what, I haven't had time to go in, I apologize.
Yep.
But everything looked nice, so.
Yep, yep.
Audit?
LGS started last month and first auditor will be here Monday.
Community outreach? Mr. Lang, she's still here, I didn't see Angie here either.
Nope.
Okay, so we'll bypass that and go to the business. You have nothing? Okay, we'll go with the superintendent's report, you're next.
Okay, I believe we pulled the items that need to be pulled, so as superintendent, I will recommend letters A and that goes all the way through K unless someone wants to pull one of those. Superintendent report will recommend letters A all the way through K.
J.
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 J, sorry.
That's all right.
No, it's K.
So it's K, I thought it was K.
I would like to, I'm sorry.
Sure, no, you're fine.
I would like to pull one of them and I should've done this before the.
That's okay, which one?
Milk Pursuit, please.
Okay. Okay, I see, page four, okay.
We'll do that one right after we deal with that.
Okay, so we'll do everything and then we'll do, right, we'll go right to, go right to the pursuit, okay.
Do I have a motion for item A?
Motion.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Yerda?
Yes.
Mr. Detrow?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, then superintendent would recommend Milk Pursuit Boys Basketball Freshman Coach effective nine twenty-six for school year two thousand eighteen twenty, with seven plus years.
Do I have a motion for this item?
Motion.
Have a motion, I have a second. I have a second. Discussion, roll call.
And Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Detrow?
Yes.
Mr. Yerda?
No.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
If you wanna do a bunch of these together?
Yep, that's, that's what it's there for, B through K. So superintendent recommends B through K.
Do I have a motion for items B through K? K?
Yep.
I already have one, I was.
I thought we did two.
Yeah.
I thought we did that.
We did those?
Yep, we did those and we just pulled, yeah, we just pulled the suit out.
I'm not used to doing it that way.
That's okay. Letter L, superintendent would recommend Amanda Stoney as Girls Basketball Volunteer Coach effective. Uh, letter L, superintendent would recommend Amanda Stoney as girls' basketball volunteer coach effective nine twenty-six and eighteen for one year.
Do I have a motion for item L?
Can that be N? Cause I made the C of L.
Okay.
We're gonna change them all down one.
Yeah.
You're taking a note, you may go anywhere you want.
Yes.
Yep, okay, I got you, Katie.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Discussion? Role call.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Detra?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
I'm staying.
Mr. Yerda?
Yes.
Okay, uh, letter N now. I'm on your paper, but it's now, uh, N, if I get my alphabet correct. Uh, before I recommend, uh, Mrs. Dawn Harris, Seacrest principal, uh, I want to thank the, uh, committee of, um, Shelley Sowers, Jeff Wheeler, uh, Stephanie Noel, Gail Thomas.
Liz.
Liz Meredith, yes, thank you, uh, for putting in three nights and, and, and we were here till six o'clock at least, if not longer. Uh, we started off with seven applicants. We broke it down to four. And I think though, I'll tell you that, that especially the last night, we had four good people to choose. But, uh, uh, you know, almost unanimously, right on, we were one hundred percent for Dawn. And, uh, we believe we got the right person for the job and, and I'm happy to recommend, uh, Dawn Harris the next principal of Seacrest.
I'm looking at yours. Do I have a motion for item?
N.
N. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Discussion? Role call.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerda?
Yes.
Mr. Detra?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Okay, letter O, it'll be N on your sheet, but O on ours. Uh, I would like to recommend, uh, Taren Jarrett as boys' basketball assistant coach effective nine twenty-six and eighteen for one year, uh, for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, and this will be his third year.
Do I have motion for item O? Correct.
I'm catching on. Motion.
Motion, I'm sorry.
Okay, do I have a second?
Mr. Stone, second.
Mr. Stone, the second. Discussion? Role call.
Mr. Yerda?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Detra?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, letter P, uh, which is O on your sheet, but P on ours. I would like to recommend John Milhone as girls' basketball assistant head coach. This will be his seven plus year for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
Do I have a motion for item P?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Role call.
Mr. Yerda?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Detra?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
I think we have one bid.
We do. Um, uh, the family of, of, of Jerry Kathley, uh, just sent us a card, uh, thanking us for the planner. Uh, this is, uh, Kathley, which will still continue to be in our thoughts. And on behalf of the board, I was there. I don't know if you guys went, but I did tell her on behalf of the board and, and we'll announce that we were, um, sorry for our loss.
Any other relational items? No? So at this point, Ms. Harris, if you'd like to say something, I'll give you that opportunity at this time.
Um, I would like to thank the committee, first of all, and the board for your support. And I know we're gonna have a break here at Seacrest, and so I'll come back next month and let you know what we're doing.
Congratulations on this.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I see no need for executive session if no one else does. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I present it. Role call, please.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Detra?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?